Yes, sir.
I have a question for you.
Certainly.
Do you have a ray of fold?
Yes, I do.
Would you like it? Or you might know the one?
If I did, I would make it sure it had forward drive. Now, mine is a special edition. And you have to be careful because it's got a lot of different, it's got a lot of significant differences over the normal one because this is called a Texas edition. It's got a great engine, great transmission, considered to be some of the best in the market. Had a problem with the transmissions, five thousand miles before the warning board, got a brand-new transmission. They were so upset about it.
Electrical boards.
That this transmission had failed after forty-five thousand miles, had to ship back to the U.S.
Hey, Phil.
You doing all right?
I'm doing great.
Good.
I like the Murano though.
Probably got us as well.
Not the road.
I'm sure you'll do a great job.
But, you know, there's.
Just had a coffee and now you're working on it.
Fifteen thousand dollars difference in price.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We'll now call our December the sixteenth, three o'clock, agenda session to order. Entertain a motion for the minutes.
Can we wait for a minute, second?
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? All right, we do have a public works and transportation meeting, committee meeting, following the agenda session this afternoon. And I guess we're still waiting on a clerk.
They're on their way.
They're on their way, thank you, sir, I appreciate that. All right, we do have a couple of items, I think about four items, on a final reading this afternoon, under planning. Do we have any questions regarding any of these items under final reading for planning? Any questions from any councilperson? All right, I see no, see no questions, so if you would, Madam Clerk, would you begin by, well, we do have one now, Councilman Anderson?
Chairman, I've got a procedural question, not related to any item on the agenda.
All right.
We've had an issue the last couple of weeks, do you think we could get this door behind my head closed and locked, per our procedures?
Uh, yes, sir. I think we're getting that taken care of as we speak.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, ordinance is under first reading, Madam Clerk, six B, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Twenty-Six, Article One, Sections Twenty-Six, Twenty-Four, and Twenty-Six, Ninety-One, relating to golf fees and Article Four, Sections Twenty-Six, Ninety-One, Twenty-Six, Ninety-Two, and Twenty-Six, Ninety-Three, relating to the Board of Directors of Brainerd Golf Course.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like an explanation of what this means.
Mr. Goldberg, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Councilman Mitchell, this is a fee increase that amounts to, for weekday, green fees for eighteen holes, it's a one-dollar increase, and for weekday, green fees for nine holes, it's a fifty cents increase. There's also approximately a ten percent increase for annual passes. The city resident discount remains in place, so this is to offset some increasing operational costs and also capital needs for the two golf courses.
Would you mind sharing where those increases are in operational costs?
I think I would ask Eddie Taylor to come up and talk about that a little bit. There are some, we do have some capital needs in terms of the greens at Brown Acres. We did the greens at Brainerd Golf Course previously, what, last year? The year before last, so.
They look great, they look great, by the way.
Most of our increased costs have been in personnel area. Some of it has been related to trying to keep the greens at Brown Acres in a good playable condition because they are twenty-five years old, so that's been some increased chemical costs and maintenance.
I'll also note that whereas in previous years, the employees at the golf courses have not received the same pay increase as other general employees in the government, we have given all the golf course employees the same increases as the other employees in government over the past two years.
Councilman Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I was just wondering, I didn't see any, because about anticipated revenue, what is the total cost of anticipated revenue?
Just for the increase or total?
For the increase, how much is that gonna bring in?
Eddie, Eddie, you might have to come back up here again. Of course, it depends on how many rounds are played at each course, but I'm sure Eddie might have an idea of that.
If our historical data holds true, it'll be in the neighborhood of sixty-five to seventy thousand dollars a year.
Good. Councilwoman Burris.
I think there was another change, too, and that related to the Board of Directors.
Yes, this ordinance also includes some cleanup of the city code. The city code currently references a Board of Directors for Brainerd Golf Course, which has not existed since the mid nineteen nineties, when we, when the city purchased Brown Acres Golf Course. So while we were doing this ordinance for the fee increase, we also had the intention of cleaning up the code and creating a section under the parks, the chapter that deals with parks, to create a section that deals exclusively with municipal golf courses.
Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Chair. Brent, when we've discussed the golf courses, especially from the case of increasing any kind of expenses, the question always comes up, so let me bring it up again, does this keep us in the black with our golf courses?
Yes, Councilman, the intention is for us to at least break even each year. On really good years, we would like to have a little bit of extra money to keep aside for capital improvements, but that's why we're being prudent with another fee increase. We increased fees for carts a year before last, so we wanted to do this increase for greens fees to, with the intention of breaking even each year.
Thank you.
Councilman Gilbert.
I can add that I personally have been over to the Brainerd Golf Course, and there are some needs there for its buildings, where the court stay that has holes in the roof, trying to make sure they maintain in a good condition, and you also got some outside areas that need to be redone, the pavings need to definitely be redone when it comes to striping, so it's well-needed for these areas.
Yeah, overall, I'd like to say this will allow us to remain competitive with other golf courses in town. It provides affordable golfing alternatives for city residents, it helps us maintain a historic site in District Five, and there's also several different types of programming at the courses for the community, that benefit the community as a whole.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do you have a revised agenda that has an ordinance six A on it?
I do not have that.
Under first reading?
I don't have it on the.
I'm sorry?
Three P.M.
Okay. All right.
I, that was the economic and community development item.
Yes.
I do have it on the six P.M. agenda, if you would like for me to read it.
If you would, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Fourteen, Sections Fourteen Seventy-Seven, Fourteen Seventy-Eight, Fourteen Seventy-Nine, Fourteen Eighty-Two, and Fourteen Eighty-Four, relative to the Board of Electrical Examiners.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Gilbert regarding this, regarding this item? That is on your six o'clock agenda, by the way, under economic and community development. Okay, I see no lights. Moving now to Resolutions, seven A, please.
A resolution authorizing the chief of the Chattanooga Fire Department to apply for and, if awarded, accept a two thousand fourteen assistance to firefighters grant issued by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, in the amount of seventy-seven thousand dollars, with the city's match in the amount of seven thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Councilman Anderson.
Chairman, unless Councilwoman Burris and myself are missing pages, I don't think we have that in our agenda. We just had a two-page agenda, which had one page for agenda session, which we've completed, and one page for Public Works and Transportation Committee.
Yeah, I think, I think what the clerk was saying is that apparently that was, that item was to be covered under our Economic and Community Development Committee, which we have now counseled, counseled. Is that correct? It is on, it is on our six o'clock.
The document I have has it, the fire is under the resolutions, and that's under agenda session.
You're talking about the Board of Electrical Examiners, Councilman Anderson.
I'm talking about item seven A, which was just read, Chairman, we don't, Councilwoman Burris and myself don't have that in our agenda, and my Economic and Community Development Committee meeting was canceled, but that did not have that on the ECD agenda.
Did you say seven A, under resolutions, or six A, under first reading?
I don't have either.
I don't have either.
Though, yes.
Okay, the item, the item that she read about the electrical Board of Electrical Examiners is an ordinance that should have been under six A, which is on our six o'clock agenda.
Well, it is on the six o'clock.
Ms. Chairman, I think if they look at the back of page one, they'll find it, out of the six o'clock agenda.
On the six o'clock? On the six o'clock, I've, I've got it on my six o'clock agenda, six, six A.
Yeah, but see, here's page one, here's page three, we're missing page two.
We're missing a page. Madam Clerk, we must be missing a page.
We're missing page two and four.
Chairman, could I move for a brief five-minute recess while we make sure we have all the appropriate documentation?
Uh, if there's no objection from the council, we can recess for five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman.
We don't have the second page or the fourth page. We don't have, this goes from five C.
Is this what was in your packet?
Yeah, they have missed a page.
They forgot to do the double side.
Well, we don't need to say money doing double sides, let's do front sides. This isn't the same agenda you and I went over this morning.
No, oh, I got you, okay, see, I haven't, I haven't seen this one, I, I was looking at this one, I was going over the one I had.
No, okay.
I got you, I got you now, I got you now.
So that's why we're looking a little bit blind.
And that's the one for six. I don't think it's really that. What happened is, I don't know why, A got left off of our agenda, this one out here, other than the fact that we were gonna have. Man, I've lost it now. We were gonna have an economic and community development, and I don't think that got put on the agenda for the agenda session. See, like this one out here, those six B, it don't even have six A on the agenda this session, so what they've done is, they, and I think she thought he was gonna have an economic and community development, and it got canceled, and it got put back up on here, then on their six o'clock agenda. It goes from page one to page three. We'll get it worked out. Oh, and you, yeah.
Okay, this is my weekly update.
Yes, sir.
For, for Mr. Donald Barbie.
Barbie, I was just on the phone with Molly the other day, I've been in touch with them, I have not been in touch with Bill, I will be in touch with Bill when I call you and let you know what we have up our.
Yes, sir.
Because I really need to get those, I've got my secretary instructed to do three D and X sections, and that is one of them, but I think I need a legal description still, when you see down, but if I can get that, I'm ready to go.
You wouldn't think it would take that long.
It should not be, it should be, the problem is that the parcels are different than they were in nineteen ninety, when they did.
Did you actually look at how they described the boundaries back in nineteen ninety?
It was a much bigger track.
I, I know, but they, they don't describe it by parcel, they describe it by, by going like fourteen hundred and twenty-five feet to the corner of so-and-so's property. And it's like, yeah, that was twenty-four years ago.
Yes, and that, it's like the old legal descriptions where they talk about the black dome or pine tree on the bluff, and that goes away for a period of time, so that's fine. We just need to have something that sort of describes that track, and I'll put a map on there, and I'll do that, I can't do anything else. Okay, we're gonna call our meeting back to order. We're, for the time being, gonna work off of our three o'clock agenda. We will get an updated agenda for the six o'clock meeting, that will have all the items on it. Let's just start back, Madam Clerk, with ordinances under first reading, six A.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Fourteen, Sections Fourteen Seventy-Seven, Fourteen Seventy-Eight, Fourteen Seventy-Nine, Fourteen Eighty-Two, and Fourteen Eighty-Four, relative to the Board of Electrical Examiners.
Okay, do we have any questions regarding this item? Mr. Attorney, you wanna?
These revisions were recommended to you by the Board of Electrical Examiners for the city. These changes are made just simply to allow a person who has a contractor's license to also get a journeymen's license here in the city. It would allow them to do that without having to take an extra exam. It does provide for the provisions for two years, which is what the Land Development Office is doing now for any licenses, instead of a one-year term, they will just pay one amount every two years, and it will work. It made it easier for the Land Development Office to account for those numbers, and those basically are the changes that were, were done.
All right, thank you, sir. We have covered item six B, which is our golf course fees and Board of Directors. We are now ready to move to resolutions, I believe, Madam Clerk, seven A, please.
A resolution authorizing the chief of the Chattanooga Fire Department to apply for and, if awarded, accept a two thousand fourteen assistance to firefighters grant issued by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, in the amount of seventy-seven thousand dollars, with the city's match in the amount of seven thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Any questions regarding this item? See no lights, seven B, please.
A resolution authorizing the chief of the Chattanooga Fire Department to apply for and, if awarded, accept a Walmart Foundation grant through the local facility giving program in the amount of one thousand dollars.
See no lights, seven C, please.
A resolution accepting the donation of a painting from Brent Saunders with a value of fifteen hundred dollars to the Chattanooga Fire Department.
All right. Councilman Anderson.
What's the painting of, I see the chief in the back there. Is it of you? Thank you very much. That's, that's better.
All right. All right, moving to planning, seven D, please.
A resolution to amend Resolution Number Two Eight Oh Seven Three, authorizing and directing the clerk of the council to advertise for public hearing on January thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, the annexation of an area referred to as Cambridge Square, tax map parcel numbers one-three-two-A-A zero-zero-one-point-oh-four and one-three-two-A-A zero-zero-one-point-oh-eight, in Hamilton County, Tennessee, as described herein below and as shown on the attached map contiguous to the city limits of Chattanooga.
Any questions regarding this item? I see no lights, is there anything else that needs to come before this council during our agenda session? If not, we'll just continue to work off of our agenda, agenda session, three o'clock agenda session, and we'll go into Public Works and Transportation Committee.
All right, we'll call to order the Public Works and Transportation Committee meeting, have a motion to approve minutes. Have a motion in a second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, his name, so ordered, thank you. Councilman Henderson.
Mr. Chairman, could we move our item six D, our transportation ordinance, to the back of the, or bottom of the agenda, cover the rest of the items first?
Absolutely, thank you. Now, according to the new agenda that we just got out, for the agenda session agenda, we still have six D and E on here, but our six o'clock agenda just has six D, so that is the one that we will be discussing tonight, not the D and E that is on this latest agenda that was put out. Councilman Anderson.
Just point of order, Mr. Chairman, that's a merged bill from yourself and, and myself, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Six D, that is the one that Councilman Henderson has requested we move to the end of the committee agenda.
Thank you.
All right, that said, Public Works, Mr. Norris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, we've got one ordinance under first reading tonight, that's item seven C on tonight's agenda. This is an ordinance disclosing abandoned sanitary sewer easement located at twenty-four oh-nine Jenkins Road, subject to certain conditions, and I believe we briefed that earlier on another session.
We did. Any questions on this item? Seeing none?
And we have Resolution seven E. This is authorizing administrator for Department of Public Works to enter to an agreement with Volker Incorporated for professional services relative to the Wallant Street Bridge Inspection and Rehabilitation Project Phase One for a amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars.
All right, I do have a few questions on this one, Councilman Mitchell.
Hello, Mr. Norris, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For one hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars, I, I read the scope of work and a lot of sight, visual inspections with that, and so, I mean, are we gonna get, it needs to be painted and replace a few boards for one hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars?
We're gonna, we're gonna sit a little bit more involved in that, we're gonna do soundings of ten percent of all the pins and joints in there, we're also doing underwater inspection of all the, the piers, it hasn't been done in at least twenty years, so we're way past due on that, so it's a little bit more than just looking at the brazier and eyeballing it.
Councilman Anderson.
Councilman Mitchell beat me to it, Chairman, I yield.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions on this item? Seeing none? Move, let's see, those are, those are all our items for this evening, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Mr. Norris?
Oh, actually, Mr. Chairman, we have about a ten-minute presentation on our annual report on our.
Okay.
MS four permit.
Very good.
I think we'll do that probably after, Mr. Bailey, you've got some items on the agenda tonight. We'll do that after transportation, it'll take about ten minutes, or we can do it now if you prefer.
I prefer right now, if that's good with you.
Dr. Monir.
Good afternoon. It's, we have the MS four permit, as you all know, is mandated by the state, and we have an annual mandates requirements to report what the activities are to the states, it's due end, end of this year. The, the permit was issued in, in November twenty-ten, and it's a five-year permit, it's, will expire one year from now. And we have the permit cycle, or the permit year coincide with the fiscal year, so we are gonna be reporting on July, on the period starting July one, twenty thirteen, to June thirty, twenty fourteen, and this is gonna be a quick update, because the city spent a lot of resources really putting the documents together, and there's a lot of activities, they're not really required to be, to be reported, but they actually are, are required to be conducted according to the permit. Here are the major permit requirements, or the major categories in the permit. Monitoring program, we, we have a very extensive monitoring sampling program where we sample. we sample major water streams, local channels, under wet weather conditions. And under dry weather condition, we do in-stream sampling and, and sampling off streams. There's a lot of requirements under the permit that are mandated by the, by the states. We also have to, we have to do an illicit discharge detection elimination program where we identify, put different air, different methods to identify illicit discharges, where we have to take the corrective actions and do enforcement. We also have to do an industrial and municipal facility inspection and monitoring. And we'll have a few slides about each one of those categories. We also have to maintain our infrastructure, our catch basin, pipes, conveyances, structures, all these has to be maintained and they're mandated by the permit. We have a construction and post-construction program which regulates construction activities during construction and regulate mandate post-construction activities after, after the construction or a seizure aside. And we also have to do training and public outreach. This is the major requirement that we've been, that we have passed through, through, through your council back in November. The major requirement in this permit cycle is actually the new requirements for the development community, for new development and redevelopment, for this, for the waters to be, to be, to be kept on site. And as we call it, runoff reduction standard or stay on volume. There is incentive required under this program, and there is actually some, some regulations that will be implemented starting this December first and going until the end of this permit year. And all this will, will, has to be executed and reviewed by the staff. And we have inspectors, we have, we have mandated activities that we have to conduct on a regular basis. I'm gonna review mainly my, the staff activities and the different, different aspects of the program. The monitoring, there's wet weather monitoring where we actually sample during rainfall event, and we have biological samples where we sample for biological matters, chemical, physical characteristics. And we do field screening where we sample under dry weather conditions. And we do stream walks or stream assessment where we actually walk stream channels, all stream channels has to be walked during a permit cycle every five years. We also have to do a sample, we have to sample certain industrial facilities, and we have to sample our own municipal facilities like the city yard or the landfills. For the industrial facilities, we have seen some improvements at, at some of our selected facilities over the last years, where we have done cooperative work with the industrial facilities. We sample for oil grease, metals, nutrients runoff. We sample under rainfall event, and we actually have seen some progress in this area. As well, under our municipal facilities, we have been very aggressive and working with our staff in the fields where we, where we have done a lot of improvements, a lot of BNP's or constructed some improvement at their, at the sites, where we have improved pollutant removals during stormwater event from certain sites. And this is an example of the wood recycling facility where we have seen a drop in, in some of the chemicals, what, chemical oxygen demand. It's, it's, it's a parameter that tests various nutrients and metals in stormwater runoff. We do the biological or the microinvertebrates at two, at two watersheds, Dobbs Branch and Frye Branch. These are done twice a year, where we collect bugs in the water, and the bugs are indicator of the, of the, of the watersheds and of the stream channel. They give us data to see how far there is an impairment in certain streams, if there's any reduction in certain, in certain bugs. It will indicate the cause of the impairment, whether it's sedimentation or if it's habitat alteration. Total maximum daily load, you heard about it during the previous month, and here's are some examples of the data that we collect for TMDLs, mainly TSS, total suspended solids in the water, and E coli or pathogens in the water. And we have sixteen location that we are actually run, and we sample and visit every, every, every month. So we have a lot of data available to give us indication over the years. Usually, this is like, we're still in the, in the first few years of these types of analysis. So this is still a baseline studies. We would expect to see some, 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 we're doing now analysis, planning, so we have enough data to determine what are the, the next calls of action, as, as an example of the, of the regulation that we just passed. The stream corridor or the stream assessment is actually, we walk the stream channels, we look for erosion, eroding, eroding banks, we look for the buffer zone around the stream channels, we look for any, any, any illicit dumping discharges going into the stream channels. This program is, the, the, one of the main reason for this program is to, is to meet TMDL's requirement, and we to also identify or identify any illicit discharges over, we have actually conducted ten, eight years in this program, and we have actually seen less the discharges going into our streams. This is our traditional listed discharge program, where we have staff responding complaint through three-one-one or complaint through the state agencies, or, or getting calls from other divisions in the city or from the field personnel, where we go out and we look for, do investigation, look for the cause of, cause of discharges. It would be oil and grease, it could be sedimentation, or it could be dumping, or it could be many, mainly the major, the major items I would say is the sanitary service lines, leaks are the major contributor to our illicit discharge. We have found about a hundred, we have conducted a hundred investigation this last, this last year, and has resulted in eighty-eight enforcement actions. And we work with different divisions and departments in the city to enforce this requirement. Our field screening program is where we go and we sample during dry weather, so we investigate the status of, of outfalls or pipes or drainage channels. We look for, if it's dry during dry weather, then there's no, there's no illicit discharge. If it's wet, discharging during dry weather, then there'll be a discharges. And we also have seen the drops and illicit discharges that has been discovered during, in this program, which have seen, which means there's more awareness, there's more, there are better enforcement tools that we have used over the last years. Municipal industrial inspections are mandated by the permit, that we shall do forty-eight industrial site inspection every year, so we visit, so we can visit all major industrial facilities in the city. And we're looking to see if, whether those facilities that are exposed to rainfall, whether they have the right best management practices to control the runoff, are they using the, do they have all containment, are they sampling the right, for the right parameters? Do they need to do more? So we do a lot of assistance, compliance assistance with the, with the, with the various industrial facility, we also has to visit our own municipal facilities, transfer station and the yards, and we have to do those quarterly. Major part of the program is, of course, the maintaining the infrastructure, where we have, where we go and we inspect every single structures in the city, whether it's a pipe or, or inlets or catch basins, it all has to be inspected, they all has to be labeled now on, with, with certain labels that say no dumping, so, and they all have to be maintained whenever they, if they, whenever they needed. We also have to do a awareness program to make sure we are collecting, we're collecting oil and grease and the, and the right containment at our facilities. The construction, post-construction management programs is where we have, where we actually go and we, we look at permanent stormwater facilities. In the past, we've seen a lot of detention pond that they need maintenance. So we have, we have staff member, their job is just to go every day, look for ponds that that don't function well, they need to be update, updated. And we have actually inspected about eight hundred facilities over the last, over the last year, and about fif, about fifty city-owned facilities. And we have, we do, we do enforcement actions, we require the property owner to maintain those structures. And we have to, we have, we keep all that stuff in a database where we follow up with, with the enforcement action. Construction program is, is managed by the Land Development Office, and I'll be sharing with you some of their data over the last permit year. They have, they have approved six hundred and eighty-eight land disturbance permit application during this period, and that which, most of these have erosion control plans, and they issued about six hundred and thirty-three land disturbance permit. Then about, only about fifty percent or fifty-seven land disturbance permits required are more than one acre, which would require the state MPDS permit. They're also, Land Development Office is also responsible to enforce erosion control actions against contractors or site, 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 you know, those who are not maintaining their site property. They are issued war, support order or, or for NOVs, notice of violations, and they have to mandate with this, with the local ordinances. We have conducted about four hundred enforcement actions during this year that have resulted in fifty-nine civil penalty and eighty-three war orders. Public education and outreach, it's part of the program elements that we have to go and, and, you know, inform the publics about our activities, about what's allowed, what's not allowed. We have, we have conducted a lot of workshops, and we have went to so many schools, and we have taught students, and we went to various community groups, churches, or different organization. We talk about pollution prevention, we talk about green infrastructure. And we, we just recently, we had a rain, residential rain garden workshop at one of the residential property owner here in North Chattanooga, and it was very successful, and we had a lot of interest in green infrastructure. Lot of property owner are interested to, to do something, and they found this is a good opportunity where they can make a difference, they can plant some native species on their property, they can capture the runoff from their impervious surface, from the roof or from the parkway, from the parking lot or driveways. So this is a good opportunity for us to share the recent emerging requirements or technologies to property owner. We also have a lot of brochures online, and we distribute a lot of materials to, to help improve our, our, our activities. Here's one example of our successful program. We have had a low-impact design competition and, and a low-impact design award back, back in the summer, and it was very successful. We have, we have got two grants, and we have distributed monetary prices, and we have, we have facilities or institution that have won the first place. Crash Pad was one of them, was recognized as one of the, one of the facilities that are LEED certified, they have a green roof, and they have permanent pavers. So we are encouraging facilities to go above and beyond the minimum requirements. I'll be glad to take any questions if you have any.
We have at least one. Councilman Freeman.
Yes, sir.
On your educational program that you take into the schools and things, tell me something about the grade levels and the type of instructional activities that, that.
Right. We usually interact with the teachers, we organize programs, we, we do demonstration site, we've done one at Normal Park where we have, we have, we helped the school get a grant to improve the grounds where we had drainage issues, so we implemented green infrastructure measures at the schools. We also work with local private schools where they were interested in doing some community work, and we, we took them to one of the local streams, and they, they, we remove trash from the streams, so we do multiple different activities.
When you said "we," do you, do you mean you, or do you mean that there's a staff?
Yes, staff, we have, we have.
Staff of education.
We have staff and my, we have, I have staff in my group, that they contact schools and organize such activities.
Is there someone who's dedicated full-time to going into school?
We have, we have one person who's dedicated full-time, and there is, all of us actually are involved almost daily in, in community awareness.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Gilbert.
Within two years of South Chickamaun Creek water quality versus now, how well have we improved?
You mean South Chick?
South Chick.
Well, we, I mean, usually there is fluctuation in this, in our result, you know, sometime, some indicators are high during spring, some indicators are high during fall. I mean, we, we don't monitor the actual stream, we, we monitor mainly small stream channels, we've seen improvement in Syraco Creek watersheds, we've seen improvement in Frye Branch where we have done some restoration projects. So it actually takes a lot of time to see improvements. We haven't seen, we cannot, you know, you cannot gauge improvement in big watershed in a short period of time.
But we do have some improvements since we do, putting things in place, correct?
Correct. And we, I mean, we've seen improvement on a small scale, like, like I mentioned, city facilities, we've seen improvement at some industrial facility where they have some, where they used to have a lot of discharges, we've seen that they have, they haven't been much discharges in the past five years. So there has been, you know, good improvement on a small scale, but to look at, to see, to see the improvement on big scale is gonna take more time. And we're hoping that the new program that you guys passed last November, this is gonna help us go to the next level.
Appreciate it.
Any further questions? Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Would you mind sending that presentation to the clerk for sending out to the council?
Sure.
I'd love to have a copy.
No problem.
Thank you again, very much. Ms. Norris, do you have anything else?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bailey.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon.
We have one item for tonight. This is to, requested to, a council action is requested to approve an amendment to an engineering design agreement between Volker and the Chattanooga Department of Transportation due to an increased project scope and additional service, services to be provided. The project includes road widening and intersection improvements on Gunbarrel Road. This is basically, we requested that the consultant do a little bit more analysis to respond to some of the needs that we heard from the folks in the community, as well as the development that's happening there along Gunbarrel Road, to make the project work better for, for what's happening out there, and also stretch our dollars farther.
I see no items, so I'll ask one, just confirmation, I believe you just, you just mentioned it, but these are changes, project scope changes due to our requests.
That's correct. We were able to get a longer project for the same amount of money.
Very good. Any questions from the committee on this item? Great, thank you, Mr. Man.
Thank you, sir.
That leaves us with one final item that is going to be six D on our agenda this evening. It is an ordinance we have discussed at length in, in two prior public hearings, the difference being this is actually a combined ordinance as, as opposed to two previous ones. And I'm asking the city attorney, Mr. Hinton, to come up and give us a little bit of a review of that item and the differences in how he was able to merge the two ordinances. Councilman Akeem, did you have a question before we begin the presentation, sir? Please go ahead.
Mr. Attorney, did I submit some proposed amendments to you?
You did.
I don't believe also I used the term, the Smith Plan had those amendments into it. Have you presented that to the council as an alternative?
I have not.
Why?
Well, it's Mr. Smith's draft, this is his motion, or his, his ordinance, rather. The way to actually amend that ordinance, and I think they have all seen a copy of that ordinance, is to file a mo, or make a motion to amend it, and it's up to the council to amend that. And if they, they follow through on that amendment, then we can vote on that, well, the council can then vote on it. But at this point, it's a, it's an amended version that you're proposing as a motion.
So you determine not to present it because you're gonna present the plan that you put together?
No, what I'm saying, Councilman Akeem, is that it's Mr. Smith's legislation. You can amend his motion, amend his ordinance by making a motion to amend it based on those amendments that you've made. If that motion is seconded by another member of council, at that point, the council can then have the opportunity to vote on those amendments.
So when Mr. Freeman said that it no longer belongs to Mr. Councilperson Smith? So when Mr. Freeman said that it no longer belongs to Mr. Counselperson Smith and Counselperson Anderson, that doesn't apply to me?
That's, that's, that's not accurate. What I said last week was, once it's presented before the council, it then will be discussed in public whether those motions will be taken up.
Did I, I did provide those to you last week, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you chose not to include them, is that correct?
That's not correct.
Tell me what you did.
We took the language, as I said I would last week. I took the language. I saw what was consistent with the spirit of the ordinance as it was drafted. We adopted some of the definitions. It's included in this draft. Some of those were not included. The fact, if there are additional changes that you would like to make, at this point, as we said last week, in public, you can make a motion to amend the ordinance. If that motion is properly seconded and then voted on by the entire body, it's then taken up as being the actual language of the ordinance.
Okay, but what you're proposing is before anything like that to be considered, you're gonna present your plan?
I was asked to present the, the, the change that was made to merge both the Smith ordinance and the Anderson ordinance.
Okay, you was, you were asked to do that. You didn't, that wasn't your idea?
Yep. Last week, I think I discussed that we, I, I could not discuss some of the specifics because I was still tweaking the language.
You were tweaking it?
I was tweaking the language, yes. Including, including.
You asked, so you were asked by Counselperson Smith and Counselperson Anderson to put them together?
No.
Thank you.
Councilman Freeman, did you have a question before the presentation?
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't wanna muddy the water at all, but I think I tried to clear that up last week and, and you ruled, and I think with the city attorney, that, that this bill that we are considering now is still the, the Smith Anderson bill as ordinance, if you will, because we haven't taken any action on it and you're just now introducing it to us. And so therefore, if, since we haven't taken any action on it, it's not ours. And if it's not ours, we can't amend it until after we accept it as ours. Either accept it in whole for consideration or take some kind of positive action to, to assume responsibility for it. So it's, it's the, your bill and his bill. And it seemed to me that, that the councilman, if it was, should have presented it to you and Mr. Anderson for consideration, if he wanted to embody it in the existing bill, is the way to go. I wanted to just clear it up because I think it's important that everybody understand that this is not the Wade Hinton bill, that this is the council, this is your bill, you and Mr. Anderson's combined. And that that's what we're considering now. And that Mr. Hinton in no way is responsible for any policy issue that's contained in this bill and is not responsible in any way for the way the procedures are being carried out as it relates to this bill. It's, it's us. I think we're the ones who said, and if I'm, if my memory serves me correctly, I was one of the ones who said, let's merge these two so we could reach some level of equity and equality to make sure that all the rules and regulations apply equally to, to all transportation entities, vehicles for hire in the community. And having, having said that, I think we are on, on the way. And I, I don't wanna give to, I think Mr. Hinton has done a great job of, of putting together the work that you all asked him to do. But I don't wanna give him any credit for the bill, the ordinance in, in itself because that belongs to you and to, to Mr. Anderson, who I think worked on the bill and the ordinance and brought it forward. Am I correct in, in what I've said thus far?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Freeman, I would add one thing. If any member of council, and I've said this to members, if they are interested in providing or putting forth an ordinance, our office is here to help draft those ordinance. That's exactly what we did here. We do that for any member of, of council, so.
Councilman Akeem, I see your light again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One, I did submit Counselperson Anderson's proposal with amendments last week. And it went to the, entire council had a copy of that. So I don't think timing was an issue on that. And I, I might have misunderstood, but I, I thought I heard Attorney Hinton say that neither Smith nor Anderson asked him to put them together. So I just wanna be clear on that. And I don't remember hearing any, I do remember Counselperson saying equity, well, essentially equity and parity. But I don't remember anyone saying, put it together.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hinton.
Within mind, what I, I'll go and proceed with.
Please.
Giving a summary. So first of all, thank you all, to all members of council. Thank you for your patience for, and allowing office to work through this bill and working with you to get this bill done. Certainly, I know that for many of you, this was terribly important. A number of you have had an opportunity to discuss some of their issues or your issues with our office. So over the past year, we've worked to draft legislation to, to provide an update on how the city works with passenger vehicles for hire. More specifically, the first article that's a part of this bill deals with, or this legislation deals with taxis. And with that, I think I've discussed this the last two weeks or our office discussed this the last two weeks. What we've done with that is we've, again, tried to deregulate somewhat the taxi industry. We've also increased fares for the first time in over twenty years. We've tried to modernize it by removing language that's antiquated. We've also created a system that's more predictable for the taxi industry by implementing the point system. Now, separate and apart from that, we've created a second article. And that article is a result of, over the past year or two, we've seen an influx of TNCs or transportation network companies such as Uber or Lyft basically disrupt the passenger vehicle for hire model across the globe. And so we knew it would be a matter of time before it actually came to Chattanooga. Working with both Councilman Smith and Councilman Anderson, we hopefully were able to address their concerns and create language that took good components of both. And we also took into consideration issues happening around the globe into drafting what you have for you. So while last week I hit maybe some high levels or high points of this ordinance, I did not address some of the specifics. So what I'd like to do now is maybe give you a couple of points to consider as you review this ordinance. First, it spells out what a TNC company has to do to obtain a license. And you cannot operate in the city without having a license. Part of those requirements include, it's a longer list, by the way. A part includes a zero tolerance for alcohols and drugs, a statement to that effect, how they would investigate those items. There are privacy restrictions on its passengers as well as the insurance requirements that we've heard about. There's a process for applying as well, including what documents are required as part of that application process. We've talked about an application fee and that fee initially was one thousand dollars. It is now five thousand dollars initially. And then it's a thirty-five-hundred-dollar annual fee. It also includes information of why or how a TNC can be rejected or the application can be rejected. There are also two sections that spell out how a vehicle can be inspected as well as the general appearance of a vehicle that wants to be considered for Uber. So if you have a, a vehicle that has a dent larger than six inches, you, you don't meet the requirements. If you, if your stoplights or your brakes don't work, you can't and you don't meet the requirements. There are over twenty-two requirements that we've listed out as part of the inspection piece. And then there's, again, another section that, that discusses the general appearance that includes logo, insignia, and placement of those things. It also goes into detail about the application process for an operator, including being subjected to a background check. It goes into detail about the TNC operator as well as, as that duty to report any changes that might have taken place with that operator over the previous year. So if this, if you're an Uber driver and you've had a moving violation or you've been involved in an accident, you have to report that to the TNC who will then report that on to the city. While there are no caps on charges, we've heard instances, most recently, I think the issue or incident in Australia where there was a price surge that went to four hundred percent, I believe. And, but, but we have put in some restrictions in this ordinance so that in cases of emergency, there can be no price surging. That's prohibited. You'll also see that there's language in here that builds directly with outreach that TNCs must do to underserved communities as well as those companies that provide vehicles and services to the disabled. Now, I know that recently there's been a lot of discussion about the safety issues and safeguards for citizens. So one of the things we've added here, since we don't conduct the background check, is an audit provision. We've spelled out what that means, how it works, how often we can conduct it. And again, it gives us assurances that indeed TNCs are doing exactly what they committed to do. If they, they don't do that, we have enforcement provisions in here that could include everything up to revoking that license. I will let you know that the news of, of issues around the globe has not escaped our office. We've looked at some of those issues. We've looked at the litigation. In fact, our office has created a spreadsheet of the litigation that's across this country. We've looked at some of the claims. We've tried to address each one of those claims as best we can in this ordinance, including the safety issues and including one that was in the most recent claim filed in California related to Uber's picking up passengers at the airports without having the proper, proper authority. We have a provision in here that goes directly to that that says they cannot do that. No TNC can do that unless they could express permission from the airport authority. Now, we also have an opportunity to review, again, any updates or changes, not only with TNCs but also with the operators that might have taken place in the past year. If indeed there are changes, again, the, the PVH board has the opportunity to review those things. And if they feel that, again, one of those requirements I mentioned earlier for projecting a TNC license or application, if one of those issues comes up, of course, the PVH has the authority to revoke that, that permit or that license. Now, again, one of the things I wanna make sure also addressed is the insurance space. I know that's been important to some of you and that was a question I asked last week. The way that this is drafted, if you are an Uber driver or Lyft driver or a sidecar driver, and those are all TNCs that we're, we're aware of at this point, if you have been called via the app or the platform to pick up a passenger, on your way to pick up that passenger, if you are somehow involved in an accident, the TNC is responsible for that. Even if you have no one in the car, if you're on your way, if you've been called, you've been held by, through the app, application, then the TNC is responsible for that. As long as that passenger is in your vehicle as well, you're responsible, the Uber or Lyft will be responsible for that. Once that passenger has left the vehicle, then it then is back to being a personal vehicle at that point, unless it's, again, en route to pick up another passenger. If it is not, then it's a personal vehicle and then the personal liability insurance would, would then be in effect. So with that, I think, again, I would say that we try to look at the, the main concerns and the main issues that have been raised, not only through litigation but also the things that I've heard from many of you and try to address those as best we can. Certainly, if there are additional comments or concerns, as a policymaking body, you all can make those amendments or make those motions to amend and decide whether you wanna make those a part of this ordinance. At that point, I guess I'll ask, any questions, any questions?
Councilman Gilbert.
Wait, I just wanna make, I understood what you said. The audit, our audit, I'm assuming, will ask the company, I guess the TNC, to revise them, the inspections and, and all the details, correct?
Yes. Well, as, as part of the application, they have to demonstrate for the inspections themselves, a document, some documentation that shows what the inspection process is. Once they provide that, of course, we can sign off on it and says, basically, say that it meets the requirements of our, our ordinance. When we conduct the audit, and the way it will work, Councilman Gilbert, is each year, they will send us a, I think it's a list of one thousand names, or in time, one thousand identification numbers, one hundred identification numbers. And on a, not more than a quarterly, more than, more frequently than on a quarterly basis, what would happen is essentially we'd say, we submit to them fifteen of those numbers and they would send us information that would match those fifteen, including the names of the individuals, including verification that they've met the inspections and they've also passed the background checks.
Not saying this company would do this, but the, the difference I'm looking taxi versus the TNC. The taxi get inspected by us, which is the city, correct? So we physically look at these things by the city to determine if they fit the qualifications, correct?
That's correct.
We are relying on a company to give us information that we hope that is correct, to provide the same information. How do we know for a shadow of a doubt that the information that they give us is correct information?
Well, again, I think one thing we've provided in here is, is, again, making sure that the inspection list is, is something that we're, we're, again, would give us some sense of comfort and confidence that there's gonna be a safe vehicle that a passenger is traveling in. But I think the second component of this is the audit provision itself. So if there's some reason that we don't believe the company is holding up its end of the bargain as an audit, we could get those, those documents and compare and to, to ensure that they've done the inspection. The other piece is this, that there is also, if there was a third-party complaint, if there's some type of complaint made that there's an Uber vehicle or Lyft vehicle or sidecar vehicle, some other TNC vehicle that is not meeting those requirements, we can inspect that as well.
So you're saying that we as a city can, if you get a complaint from a constituent, our constituents, then we can actually, our people can inspect and follow up with that to see if it's true or not?
The, the way it would work is we would ask the TNC to provide us the relevant documents that show that it's been through that inspection process.
So we still not looking at it, just we're relying on the company to tell us that information?
Well, well, the thought I would think, and I will say this, that, that we're gonna go through the next, as we get through this ordinance piece, if indeed it passes, there will be an implementation period and we'll have a step-by-step process. But I would, my assumption would be that indeed there will be some physical review of that. But for there, to be a complaint, there has to be at least, I would imagine, that some person or some party has said that this car doesn't meet that standard, so.
And we, we go back to the company and tell them instead of us inspecting it, correct?
Well, we, first, we wanna see if indeed, we wanna verify that, again, this company has taken this car through the inspection process. And so ask them to provide us with those inspection documents. And once they provide those with those inspection documents, I mean, I, I think we can try to figure out some type of mechanism to physically see the, the vehicle as well.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
You answered, I don't agree with it, but you answered, yes.
Councilman Akeem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a series of questions and if you need to cut me off and come back, I understand, sir. Mr. Attorney, would it be accurate to say that we have one system in this ordinance for taxes and one system for TNCs? In other words, it's not treating them the same?
It's a different, it, it's, it's, it's different, yes.
Would it also be accurate to say that in regards to background? Would it also be accurate to say that, in regards to background checks and items of that nature, these expenses that the taxes have to go through, what is it about the TNCs that we would not require them to do the same? What history do they have nationwide that says that we shouldn't inspect what they're doing?
Well, I, I think what we've done here is we provided some, some mechanisms in here to make sure they're doing what they're doing. So if there's a question as to whether a TNC is running background checks, I think the audit provision allows for that to happen, for us to make sure they're doing what they're doing. If, if your question is more about, well, if the council should have other language that requires the TNCs to do something different, then I, I would, I would state that that's really a policy decision that, that's up to the bodies to determine whether you want to do it or not.
Okay, so I, I think what I'm hearing from you is that regardless to what we've seen nationwide or worldwide, we're going to rely on this company to provide accurate information. And I guess my reason for asking it that way is that, just the information I have, these people disregard regulations anyway. So what, what makes you think that they're going to comply with something on paper?
Well, a couple of things. One, I, I'm not saying that we disregard, we didn't disregard what's happened around the world. I think Councilman Anderson Smith can tell you, we, I sent emails at crazy hours because of different issues happening. But I, I think for, for, for us, we took that into consideration to make sure we had the safeguards in here. And so that audit provision, again, allows us to make sure that they're doing exactly what they've committed to do. If indeed, the audit, if, if, if conducting an audit, after conducting an audit, we find that they haven't done what they said they were committed to, then that's something for the PVH board to, to consider and possibly revoke their license. But I, I think that there were two things that I think both council members said to me separately. One was, you know, again, they wanted to make sure it was, again, a fair regulation. And two is that they were concerned about the safeguards and making sure that the passengers were safe. And so I do think that we've tried to capture that as best we can in this ordinance.
So you consider it fair to have two modes of operation in this ordinance? For taxes and for TNCs?
I, I didn't say that. I said, what I said was, we tried to, as best we can, try to make an ordinance that's fair in terms of the regulations. And then the second piece is, we tried to make sure that there were safeguards in place.
Okay, you consider it fair, even though there are different guidelines? One has to submit, have to, we have to check their drivers, we have to check their cars and all that. And then the other sort of sends us a piece of paper. You, you consider that fair?
Mr. Councilman Hakeem, that really, again, is a question, if that's, that's a question of whether the council wants to do that or not. And if they do, then I think a motion to amend that would be, would be proper.
I think you said something about fairness, and I'm, and you implied, I interpret what you said, to imply that that was fair to have those differences.
Well, I think what I said is, I think we did it as best we can, so.
I'll come back, Mr. Chairman.
Come on. Thank you, sir. Council Chair Henderson.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hinton, is Uber or these other ride shares, under our definition for vehicle for hire, is, are they considered a vehicle for hire, under our definition? I mean, would you, I'm asking as, you as a lawyer, or as our city attorney, would they fit the definition for vehicle for hire?
Under the current ordinance?
The, this last proposed ordinance.
Under proposed ordinance, they are not a vehicle for hire.
That definition would not fit a, what Uber does?
Well, that's, that's not, the question is whether, we, I think what we've done in, in defining vehicles for hire in the first ordinance is we've accepted, I think, transportation network companies from the definition. Well, they are not.
Exempted it?
Exempted it, rather, sorry.
Well, I didn't see the exemption. Maybe I missed that. Under this latest ordinance, the one that we, the combined one, let me put it that way.
One second here. My apologies, Mr. Chair. There have been so many versions going back and forth in the office that at one point, they were not included, but they are included.
So Uber is a vehicle for hire, by our definition?
Under this current definition, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Moving to our, to the background checks that we're requiring the TNC to do, the, under section 35290, is this the same type of background check that we require, or that we do for the taxi industry?
Currently, it's not. You said the, the one that, the background checks for TNCs is the same one that we do for, currently do for taxis?
Yes.
It is not currently the same.
Because it's not the same?
It is not the same.
Can you tell me the differences? Because I, I don't know.
I think basically, one of the issues would be the registration on the National Children's Sexual Offense Registry. That's one difference. We don't check that for taxi drivers.
Here we do.
So you're saying this is more stringent? The, the TNC background check we're requiring to be more stringent than taxi? Is that correct?
Yes.
So the TNC would actually check for some things that we don't check for? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
There, there is one slight change, and I wanted to confirm this before I said this. There's another change there for the background checks. There is a cutoff for the TNC background checks that they go to seven years, except for certain crimes. And those certain crimes would be if they're, I mean, there is no sort of, they, they don't expire in terms of the, or roll off in terms of the background check. So if, as, as Mr. Fred said, if you are a sexual offender, or you're somehow on this registry, that regardless of the amount of time that stays as part of your background check, that a TNC would run? Yeah, that would run, yes.
Now, on the audit, under 35293, I, maybe I need a flow chart. I don't really understand. I understand there's, we can audit on a quarterly basis, and then there's an annual basis, and then there's something about once a month. And I'm a little confused, I guess, about the TNC providing to our PVH board up to 100, but not less than 25. Is, whose discretion is it as to how many numbers they submit?
Well, it, it really, you know, this is, this sort of gets into as the TNC perhaps ramps up. If, I didn't want to put it in or give them too much discretion, because initially, if it was just up to 100, because we looked at other language, by the way. We looked at other language, and some of the language provided that the, the TNC would provide up to 100, or up to 1,000 names, or the numbers. Instead of giving that wide range, what we wanted to do is at least create a threshold amount, and that's what the 25 would, would represent, so.
You're going to check 15 out of the 20 anyways?
We would only check 15 out of 25 anyway.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Now, the, is the, the 15, is that 15 a quarter, or is that annually? We only check 15 a year?
15 a quarter.
15 a quarter.
That's correct.
So at some point, they would, if we check, if we're checking 15 a quarter, they would need to give us more than 25, then?
That's, that's correct. If indeed, the number continues to go up, and, and, you know, at this point, until we get, we're, we're regulating the company, we don't have the, an idea of how many drivers there are right now. But if indeed, let's say there were 50, and we, on our fourth audit, if you will, that number would obviously reach to, go to, go to 60, because we can do 15, 15 each. They would have to provide us additional names or numbers, if they had more than, more than 50.
Okay. I've got one more, one more follow-up question. When, when they do the audit, can they check the background checks? They're not just looking, they're not just checking the, you did a background check. Are they actually going in and reviewing the background check for what the background check says, and that they actually check for all the things that we're looking for?
That would be the discretion of the board, but, but they would have that opportunity to do that.
The discretion of the?
The board of the PVH inspector.
Okay.
Councilor Chair Burris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you've done a really good job to address the many concerns that have come forward. However, we can't know what we don't know. And what I would like to do, and I don't know whether it's proper to do it now or later, is, is suggest that we add an amendment, that there's a review period. It can be as brief as possible, six months. It can be, because all of this is statistical. And I think we could get a better handle on where we've done really well with this, and where it needs some tweaking, after this some sort of track record. So I would ask the, the two gentlemen that if you would accept a friendly amendment for a review period, and I'm open to timelines, but I think we have to be pretty strict this first year, and see how we're doing. Until we've given this a trial run, I think it's going to need some massaging. And I think we can't know that until we strictly enforce what we do have, and then see where we need to go. So I would suggest at least a six-month report back to us, if indeed, this does get passed, and then a definite review period. Thank you.
Wade, would it be appropriate right now to accept that as a, as a motion for the ordinance this evening?
Yes.
Is that a motion, Councilwoman?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
With Councilwoman Burris' permission, I, I would like to see a six-month and a year. I think there's maybe some things that wouldn't show up in six months that might in a year, and vice versa.
Sure.
So I, I would suggest a six-month.
I accept that. And does that mean you're also seconding it?
I would also second that motion.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to add a six-month and a one-year review period to the ordinance as drafted. All those in favor, aye? Opposed is nay?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know that.
Oh, sorry, sir.
I, I was, I was going to point of order. I don't think that a vote is necessary if the two cosponsors of the bill adopt it. Wade, is that correct?
I'd rather go ahead and have a vote if possible.
Is it necessary?
If it's a motion to amend.
Well, I'll register my vote as yes.
Councilwoman.
Yes, sir. I, I think the councilman is right. Something is going to be presented to us to, to be voted on. And I would like, clued it in that, this, this amendment. That's my point, and I believe that's what was seconded. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I do call that vote, then, let me just make sure that there are no further questions on the amendment that has a proper motion and second. I had a number of lights for previous discussions, so I'm not sure if any of those had to do with the amendment, or if those were further discussion. All right, seeing no further questions, I would ask, all those in favor of the amendment? Oh, sorry, I thought you said you wasn't. Sorry, go ahead.
There were two kind of, thank you. There were two kind of different things said. I just want to make sure we know what we're voting on for this amendment to the proposed merged ordinance. This would set up a six-month report back and a 12-month review. Is that correct?
Councilwoman.
Yeah, I think the report, I, I understand the difference that, that you're saying. I think that if, at the end of six months, I want it pretty comprehensive. And it may be that, because it's, it's all data-driven, that we need to do some tweaking then. So I'm not sure the difference between report back and total review. I'm talking about look at it totally in six months, the data-driven part. And then, as my colleague says, again, in 12 months. And I'm not sure, you've got a different idea in mind, so.
That answers my question, and I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Prepared to vote? All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed is nay? One abstention? Two abstentions? Seven in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. We will move on with questions. Councilman Freeman.
You can take my light down, my question was answered.
Very good, sir. Councilman Gilbert and Councilman Hakeem, I've got both of you on here, but I also had a light from Councilman Anderson, who had not spoken yet on this.
I merely had a question about the amendment.
Very good, sir. Then, Councilman Gilbert. Thank you, sir. Back to Councilman Hakeem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The insurance piece that we talked about with Uber, if the driver is on his way to pick up someone and an accident takes place, have we reviewed Uber's insurance policy to verify exactly what's in there and what, in fact, they do cover?
At, at this point, we have not reviewed any TNC's policies. Part of this exercise is to create the regulations and the, the process in which we would review those insurance policies. And the application process would include reviewing, reviewing that policy.
Wait a minute. We, we have in this document that we will review the TNCs and, I don't know if this includes the drivers also, but the TNCs, we're going to look at their insurance policy.
Well, it, it basically says it shall maintain, and if indeed, we need to inspect it, we will do that.
Councilman, can, I'm sorry, can, can I answer one question for you? I don't, I don't know if you noticed this part, or if you're asking specifically. So if you are, I apologize if I'm answering a question that, that may not be your intent. This ordinance does specify that their insurance provides a coverage of at least $1 million per incident for accidents involving a TNC operator. So there's actually, and then there's additional provisions. But the ordinance doesn't just say that they have to carry insurance. There are some specifications in this ordinance about the minimum amount of insurance that they need to cover. And you may have seen that, I just wanted to make sure you understood.
Yes, I did, but my, my question was, were we taking their word for it? Are we going to actually review it?
Mr. Hinton.
Currently, it just says maintain. If, if indeed, we need to amend it to, say, provide a copy of the policy, that, that's... I thought we had, one second.
And as much as my memory is, is good, I, I cannot recall. I believe we, we, at some point, had that we will be added as an additional insured. But to the extent it's not in here, we'll make sure that it's, it says provide.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, in regards to the drivers, I think you've seen the letter from the state insurance person. If I understood it correctly, it does not cover those drivers while they're in a process of going or coming, or doing that vehicle for hire piece?
Again, if my memory fails me now, but I think the letter states something to the fact of some policies don't allow for that coverage. And I think it encourages some vehicles, so some TNC operators. so some TNC operators, to obtain commercial insurance. What this particular provision does, it says, states is, if indeed there is a question of, of, of coverage, while before or during the time that an operator receives a notice on their application to go pick up a passenger, to the time that, that trip is completed, the TNC would step in and close that gap.
Oh, oh, so we, we are holding them responsible if the oper, the drivers don't have the proper insurance?
That's correct.
And that's something we're gonna check also, right, to make sure it's in the policy?
No. If, if in some, if indeed, again, if, if, the thought is that the, the driver would carry insurance. That's part of this requirement, part of the application requirement for operators. If indeed there is a gap in coverage, the TNC would then step in to fill that, fill that issue.
Okay, I hear what you're saying, but my question is, is that, are we asking or saying to the TNC that you're gonna have this in your policy as we review it?
Commercial insurance or?
Fill the gap.
Yeah, well, it's, yes, yes. Answer to that question is yes, because they have to be in compliance with this ordinance, and the ordinance is pretty clear that you have to have that gap insurance, gap coverage.
Okay, I might have missed that. I didn't see that.
Well, it, it, it states that it provides coverage of at least $1 million per incident for accidents involving a TNC operator from the time the operator accepts a trip request until the completion of a trip, regardless of whether the operator maintains personal insurance adequate to cover any portion of a claim.
I'll ask one other and then defer to you, Mr. Chairman. There was discussion about removing the cap. I don't know if that would be a part of this or if it's something that the board would deal with itself. And do you have, I mean, I got it from you. Do you have any idea what kind of impact that would have on the industry itself?
We do not. What we have included in here, though, is a reporting mechanism that allows the PVH inspector or the board, chair for the PVH board to inspect the number of vehicles that are working as, working under, well, that are driven by TNC operators. So our thought is that we could figure out or the, the board could determine the market trend. So if there are twenty operators on the road versus forty versus sixty.
Okay, I, I guess what I'm getting at is, I, I think, I'm just gonna throw out a figure. Presently, the board has a limit of 125 taxis. And are, are we saying that the, what do we call them? TNC's would be a part of that 125 or are they separate and apart?
Well, a couple of things. One, I think, one of the things that is, you'll see in the first article is that we removed or we recommended a removal of that cap. Leave the market has basically figured out that it needs to be where it is now, or if, if indeed at some point the PVH board decides that they want to implement a cap, this ordinance allows them to have that discretion. Again, going back to the point of the, the reporting process of the numbers of the TNC operators on the road, I think that could better inform the board if later on it needs to make a recommendation to this council to come back and maybe put in a cap. But at this point, we don't have enough information. I think during a six-month reporting, uh, report and the annual report or review, we'll be able to make a better determination if that, that's necessary. But right now, it's too early to tell.
Okay, I think I'm hearing that, let's say the cap is 125, that we could have forty or fifty TNC drivers in addition to that during this trial period we're talking about.
Well, what I'm saying is, to, if the council votes on the ordinance as presented, that cap of 125 goes away, right? So for, for taxis, for, for PVH, so it goes away. That, this ordinance gives to the board the discretion to some, at some point, come back and say, well, if we want to put in a cap, they have the discretion to do that. But right now, it goes away.
And what history do you have nationally that that benefits the industry? What I'm saying is, my, my first thought is that you're gonna afford the TNC's an opportunity to kill off any competition. They're giving free rides and everything else. Then you're gonna remove the cap. To me, that says you're killing those, uh, parts of the industry that are already present.
Well, again, I think the reporting piece that we've requested, and it's now a part of this ordinance, addresses some of that issue. That's, that's, that's number one. And number two, I, just about every city I, I go to, I ask taxi drivers to, to tell me about the influence. And so, for the most part, I mean, there's been either, you know, some collaboration or at least some change. In fact, there are some cities where taxis are part of the Uber, Uber platform.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Chairman, I am gonna defer, but I, I, I need an answer to the question. The question was, and do we have a history from other cities where caps have been removed that that benefits the industry in those cities?
Caps from taxi industries or caps from, I'm, I'm confused on the question.
Okay.
Are you saying, was there a cap on a TNC?
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, if I understand you, there, there won't be a cap.
That's correct.
And that means that any number of TNC's or any number of taxis can, can operate. Have you found that to be beneficial to those communities to remove the cap?
To answer your question, no. At this point, I have, I don't have that information. I, I have studied a report that was done by the San Francisco Board of Supervisors and reviewing that, and there is, you know, some, some, some impact, but I, but, but there are also some recommendations. Some recommendations, by the way, I've, I've heard mentioned, you know, here, here today. So I think part of the safeguards that we, we, well, I'll just put it at that. But there is a report that I have reviewed, but it, at this point, I can't really speak to how it would impact Chattanooga.
Sir. Council Vice Chair Henderson, I do have your light, but I also have a few others that haven't had a chance to speak yet. Do you mind if I go to them? Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've, I've heard about the free rides a few times. I've never had one. I just wanted to say that there are no free rides from Uber or any other TNC in Chattanooga, Tennessee currently. That was the first week only. I believe they ran a promotion to get into the marketplace. The up to five were free in the first week. That was several weeks ago. That's a common promotional activity across many, many industries that we don't regulate in any other way. I support lifting the taxi cap. Let the market determine how many taxis. Let the market determine how many TNC's. The market determines a lot of things very well for our city. I'd be happy to let them determine the maximum taxis as well. Wade, if you can turn with me to page 22 of the merged ordinance, I'm at section 35-293.
Okay.
So this is the audit of the TNC provision. If we scroll down to, I'm scrolling, you're looking on paper. So if we flip the page and look at the next page, which is page 23, section B subsection six says they must, that, it says comply with all regulations promulgated pursuant to this chapter. Those regulations include the million-dollar insurance policy and so forth. So this section, if you look at section A and B, this allows, tell me if I'm right, this allows the PVH board, the PVH inspector, or the city auditor to request a copy of the insurance policy for a TNC company whenever they see fit.
I'm sorry, Councilman Anderson, you have to...
So a TNC company has an insurance policy.
That's right.
Section 35-293 subsection B6 provides them the opportunity to request that whenever they see fit. They can, they can review the policy. I'm looking at the, the, oh, if you're looking at the ordinance you were handed right as we started this meeting, that is not the Smith Anderson ordinance. Well, that's Councilman Hakim's ordinance that was distributed earlier, wasn't it?
It was the Smith Anderson. We, me.
I've got my page numbers wrong then. Wade, just so you know, that's not the version that's online.
We understand. And in fact, I mean, we obviously had to make some modifications and, and indeed, the recommendation, I think, from Attorney Knoblet would be to submit a motion to substitute the version for, for this latest version.
I'm fine with that. It just changes the page numbers. So in 35-293, does it not grant the PVH board, the PVH inspector, or the city auditor the right to see the insurance policy of a TNC, a commercial insurance policy? If they, if they have to comply with all the regulations, wouldn't that give them that right?
Well, and, and the other piece is, well, under the audit side, it, it really speaks to, one second here. The inspections or the, the safety of the backgrounds, but there is another provision that does allow that to, to happen. It, it goes directly to if indeed the PVH inspector or the board has reason to believe or has a question about it, it can obtain certain documents from the, the TNC company, so.
It is your opinion that the documents would include the commercial insurance policy?
Yes.
To show proof of insurance whenever asked?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Groan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hinton, on page 13, section 35-284 subsection C, where it states that a TNC driver has to be licensed in Chattanooga and cannot operate within the corporate bound, has to operate within the corporate boundaries of the, the city where it's licensed. How are we going to, for example, a, a friend of mine drove this weekend for Uber, and in one of the stops he made, there was another Uber driver with a Davidson County license tag picking up customers. So how do we enforce this section? And how do we deal with conflicts that might arise between whatever ordinance we come up with and those of any other city in the state?
Well, we, we don't govern Nashville, so to the extent we govern Chattanooga, if you are a Davidson, if you are an Uber driver or Lyft driver and you're from Davidson County, and the inspector, if it receives word that indeed, or a complaint that you are operating in Chattanooga, the proper thing would be to, to investigate that and to turn it over to, to, to the TNC and we'll, and bring them before the PVH board.
So how, in, in terms of enforcement, who's going to contact, who's going to find out? Of course, through our audit capabilities, we would be able to find out. We'd see a license number if it was reported, yet we are not able to audit through Uber an individual's name, only the last four digits of their social security number, or we would have to contact Nashville, and that, that particular TNC that operates for Nashville to try to find out if this individual is dual-registered, both in Chattanooga and Nashville. So who would actually do that, and how in the world would we enforce it, and whose responsibility would that be?
Well, I, I think the question, and I'll try to answer as best as I can, you know, if, if indeed there is reason to believe that a TNC is acting in violation of this ordinance, we would, we have the authority to request documentation, whatever we need to do to ensure that they are adhering to the terms of this, the, the requirements set forth in this ordinance. If they're not, then the PVH board has the opportunity to enforce that. So it, whether it's the transport, was now known as the Transportation Inspector, but recommended as the PVH inspector, getting information, whether it's from an individual citizen or someone else who is a TNC operator, that a person is operating outside, someone is operating within the corporate bounded, boundaries of the city and are not registered here in this city, and then, then we would, again, we would investigate and ring before the PVH board, so.
So what would be the penalty for the TNC that's registered here in Chattanooga that they have a driver outside their registration operating within Chattanooga?
Well, it, I think it would determine on whether it's a common TNC. And if it's a common TNC, if there's, there's an Uber driver that's out of Nashville and they're operating here in, in, in Chattanooga, I think we would at least, at least look, have to look at the TNC or Uber to hold them accountable for, for that, that driver.
And what would the penalty be? Just give me an example.
That would be to the discretion of the PVH board.
Let me move on. In, in terms of a TNC driver not being authorized, and this is on page 15 of the copy which I have, under 15, not being allowed to operate property owned or controlled by the Chattanooga Metropolitan Airport Authority. I know for a fact that, that this weekend, an Uber driver dropped off passengers at the airport. And I know we're not enforcing this right now, but, so where, where do we go with the, the board at the airport authority to determine whether they're going to allow or disallow driver, passengers to be picked up there? Or how do we, how do they or we regulate drivers being dropped off if they're not allowing them to pick up?
Well, I, I think the airport authority has a history of being able to regulate that, that particular issue. They do it. That, that's something that I've heard from drivers in the taxi industry, that, you know, that, that the airport authority sets those regulations. And so we are asking the TNC work with, the TNCs work with the airport authority to come up whatever arrangement that is, but we'll, we'll leave that to Terry Hart and his team.
On, in section, and 35-230, 285, this is at the end on page 16, I believe that we need to edit the last line, which talks about, "In the declaration of a state of emergency, any duly elected and authorized government official." To me, it just seems like that needs to be edited to, to make it more clear. Who, it, it's either gonna be the city, the county, or the state, or national that declares a public emergency, not, because I'm a duly elected government official, but, yeah, it's like, you know.
Is that a motion, Councilman Freeman? All right, so we'll, we'll, is, is that a question of clarification on that?
That's, that's a suggestion for clarification.
All right.
Watch out, buddy. I have one more, and then we can move on. Under the vehicle inspection standard, that's section 35-288, who sets the standards? For example, under Q, the condition of tires including tread depth, who sets the standard for minimum tread, tread, tread depth for public safety? Is it Uber? Who sets it?
Well, a couple of things. One, I, one amendment I would ask that you all make with, with this is sort of a 30-day implementation period to allow us to work with the PVH inspector to, to sort of see what standards they normally use for the inspection, so it can be consistent, whatever we have in place.
Earlier in, in this proposed legislation, it states that the vehicle is supposed to have all, all the seat belts that were in place when the vehicle was brand-new and purchased. And it, in section S, it says, "Safety belts for driver and passengers." I, I also know that an Uber driver this weekend stopped at a location, it was a bar, to pick up a passenger and ended up with seven passengers in his car. up a passenger, and ended up with seven passengers in his car, and of course, did not have enough seat belts for eight passengers in his vehicle. And he had passengers in the backseat, sitting in the laps of other passengers. So how do we, how do we, in terms of public safety, and realizing that the lack of seat belts in, in any sort of a wreck is dangerous to passengers, how do we regulate that you can't have more passengers than you have seat belts?
Well, I think we can clarify it on S, but I also think that if indeed there's a situation where, again, we can clarify it on S, but I also believe that if indeed an officer sees that someone is, someone's not wearing their seatbelt, that person could be cited. That's also something that could be reported as part of the report that the TNC gives to, to the PVH Board.
Well, my suggestion is, wouldn't it be better to enforce this ahead of time than after the fact?
Well, what I'll have is, I think we can put safety belts for driver and each passenger.
I believe that would be acceptable, and...
Is that, yeah, okay, all right, great.
Councilor Terry Henderson?
Mr. Hinton, is there a way that we can mark or note which version we have in the ordinance, I mean, because apparently Councilman Anderson, you know, was reading off of one and I, here that, I just want to make sure that when we vote, we know which one we're talking about.
Well, the one you'll vote on tonight will have a 30-day implementation period. It'll have the correction or the clarification that Councilman Groan and I just discussed. It'll also have the amendment that includes Councilwoman Versus' motion for, for annual review and the six-month review.
But there's, but there's no way to distinguish in the title or some way?
We can, we'll put some, some note that that is the final version.
I wouldn't put the, I wouldn't put the final version.
Okay, we'll put restated version. How about that? We'll put restated version.
Something to, to mark it. I have a question just for my, I guess, on general knowledge. Are an Uber driver to be licensed by the PVH Board, is that the, what's the difference between that and certificate holders of public convenience and necessity?
I'm sorry, I don't believe we're asking.
Well, if I, if I read this, I mean, and it just alludes to it, but it doesn't really say that a taxi driver has to have it, but I'm assuming they do.
But the taxi driver, yes.
Yeah. So what's the difference between the public convenience and necessity certificates and just a license?
Well, the license is allowing the application, I mean, the, the TNC to operate within the, so the license actually goes to the TNC, not the operator.
Okay. And then what's the public convenience and necessity?
That's something that through the, the ordinance, I mean, through the code and what the PV, or the Transportation Board has determined to be the amount, maybe asking Ken for it to come up and talk about that a bit, but it's the amount of, at this point, 125 that could be distributed to the taxis, taxi drivers in the city.
The certificate is for the taxis. A license will be issued to a TNC, so they'll be on two different tracks. You pay $1,000 for the certificate, you'll pay initially $5,000 for the license. So it's two different tracks.
Yeah, okay. And the Uber, I'm gonna just call it Uber drivers, the TNC drivers, it says that they just need a valid driver's license, but is that not, they don't have to have a chauffeur's license to haul passengers?
They do not. Not, not, not in this term, not in this particular ordinance, no.
Well, I guess I'm asking by state law, they don't have to. They can, they can be a vehicle for hire without a chauffeur's license.
State law does not address TNCs at this point. They are, some states that are taking it up, but Tennessee is not at this, at this, at this time. They have allowed for cities to regulate this, this industry, and so cities like Nashville and others have taken upon themselves to do that.
Well, let me ask it another way.
And so it does not speak to that, it does not speak to the chauffeur's license.
So it doesn't address vehicle for hires?
What states?
The state law doesn't?
What, what, it, it, there is, there are provisions in, in the code that state, the TCA, that deal with vehicles for hire, but it has allowed the, or authorized municipalities to determine or regulate the vehicles for hire themselves. And so this section, 35, is Chattanooga's regulation of those vehicles for hire.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Good, sir. Councilman Hakim?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. To the last question, what is it about TNCs drivers that we would not want them to have commercial license, but we require other vehicles for hire to have those license?
Well, I'll, that's really a question that I think this body can determine when, when looking at this, this ordinance. If indeed you determine that you want an additional license for the TNC operator, that's, that's a policy question that you'll have to decide.
When we talk about public safety and the drivers, the definition of background checks and so forth, what, what is our definition of a background check?
I'll pull Ken up for this one. Is it just basically TBI?
Yes, TBI. Basically that. You can go to the TBI, Tennessee Bureau of Investigation, and pay the fee, and they will generate a background report.
Okay, and we're saying with the TNCs, they, we take their word that they've done these types of things?
Yes, they, they run a multi-jurisdictional background check. Again, there is some cutoff for the amount of time, there's a seven-year cutoff for most crimes, but if there are egregious crimes such as, again, sexual offenses, there is, or if they are on a sex offender registry, that is sort of a lifetime review. But yes, to answer your question, we allow them to do it. We, we, we would run, again, an audit if indeed we wanted to confirm and verify that they are doing exactly what they've said they're doing in this ordinance.
Okay. I'll leave it alone. My next question deals with the insurance. I think I've heard two different things where the Board can ask for copies of the insurance and so forth, and I thought I heard earlier, we were talking about the TNCs would be required to provide copies of the insurance or whatever else that the Board sees that it, it needs to be brought forth. Which way was it?
Well, what I have here is, I think someone has made a suggestion, that I think maybe based on our last discussion, that instead of putting maintain, we put provide, and I have that noted.
Okay. Last question, dealing with the TNCs, when, when I see here, we're talking about uniform, logos, insignia, decals, dress code, how, we're gonna enforce that?
That's right. I mean, the, just as Officer or Officer or Inspector Topping would go out and, and if he would notice something happening with someone in the taxi industry, if indeed, whether it's Officer Topping or any other officer, if someone purports to be a TNC operator and they don't have some logo insignia that meets these requirements, if they don't have proof that they're on a platform, then again, the enforcement mechanism in here allows us to, allows the PVH to take action.
One last question, sir. The...
Your promise is yours.
No, you, you, let's just say you on my list, okay?
I've been on that list for a long time.
All right. But the, the app that does the, I guess, the metering from one location to another, how much it costs and that type of thing, is there anything in here where we would inspect those for accuracy or just taking that word for it?
Well, not the app itself, but if indeed an operator is pulled over for, whether it's an accident or some other violation, what they have to show the officer is that they are connected to the platform, that they can show their manifest, they can show their insurance, they can show a photo of their driver's license, the driver's license or their, their license plate, so we can verify that this is who they say they are and, and indeed, they are in, as, in part of the system. If they cannot show those things, I think this is part of the question, one of the questions earlier, we would cite them in front of the PVH, PVH Board, or to City Court, depending on, depending on the circumstance.
Okay, let me ask it another way. Whether it's an app, platform, or whatever, let's just say Uber is on one end of it, and the information is transferred to Uber, they determine the distance, they determine the amount and so forth. Do we have a mechanism in place to verify that they're not charging double what is considered normal for that route?
Well, I, I think that's, this is a section that deals with charges, and for the most part, I think what we've said is that that is going to be up to the TNC. We do have some prohibitions, though. If, again, if there's a state of emergency, there are other challenges happening, then there cannot be any price surging.
Ms. Chairman, I apologize, but what I want to know is, just like you would check the meter in a, in a taxi, do we have a way of checking the mileage or the amount that the app or the platform puts forth? You know, if it's, if it's a 10-mile ride and they're charging for 20 or 30 miles, do we have any way of checking that?
I'm going to the charges section, and I'll tell you exactly what it says. A TNC may offer service at no charge, suggest a donation or charge affair, provided that if a fare is charged, a TNC shall disclose the fare calculation method, the applicable, applicable rates being charged, and the option for an estimated fare to a passenger before the passenger arranges a trip with the TNC.
As a regulating body, is the Board able to check their metering by app, platform, or whatever, to ensure that they are charging the appropriate amounts?
That's, that's not part of the auditing base. Now, if there's, if there's a complaint, I'll say this, now, if there's a complaint, I'll take that back, if there is a complaint that there are somehow some issues with consumer protection, we do have, and we do have language in here that, that goes to them providing us relevant documents for consumer protection. So that, yeah, yes.
Thank you, sir. Hey, Wade, we have no further questions, so we will close the question period. Do you have anything else you'd like to add in closing?
No, again, I, again, I thank you guys, you all for your patience as we work through this. I know there were a lot of versions going back and forth. We, we were working hard to try to come up with the best version. We understand that we may have to tweak it six months from now or a year from now, depending on the information that, that is provided over the next little bit. I do want to take a moment, though, to, to make sure, I think, both of you for your, your, your work on this, and I also want to make sure, I thank Phil Noblet, as well as Ken Fresson and Elizabeth Roderick from our office, for the work on this, on this ordinance.
Councilman Anderson, we close questions. Is this a comment, sir?
It's a comment, not a question. No response needed. First of all, I want to say that it was not Attorney Hinton's fault that I had the wrong version. I was looking at the online version, which is typically the most up-to-date, but not always and not guaranteed, and it's easier to carry around this than all the papers that we use in a day just to check it on the web. But that was my mistake and not Wade or anybody else in the office. I misspoke. I'll probably never do it again, so.
You should get the minutes on that to go.
But, but I will say, Wade, I'm very grateful to you two. You took two very unique ordinances in Councilman Smith and myself, and you merged them, I think fairly seamlessly with the help of Phil and Elizabeth and Ken, and I really do appreciate that. Your office has put in a lot of time, and it's not easy. I appreciate it.
Wade, I will take privilege with the last comment and keep it simple. Thank you very much for all your work, you and your staff. I know it's been a lot, and I know you've been researching a lot, and I have received a lot of late-night emails, so I do appreciate everything you've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That being said, are there any further questions for the committee at this time? Seeing none, we are adjourned.
He at least knows I've mentioned the word Barbie, so he is working.
Okay, good.
I did that before he left.
Thank you. And I'm gonna keep bugging you.